A moment of silence, please. Thank you. Is there anyone signed up for?
No one has signed up for public council.
Student council report.
Good evening, everyone. Last week at Rogers, all the juniors presented their History Day projects. The theme this year was Leadership and Legacy, and the students did a great job with their exhibits, documentaries, and performances. The third quarter began last week, meaning that we are more than halfway through the 2014-2015 school year. The Rogers Theater Company and the Middletown Theater Company performed the comedy Almost Made Together last Friday and Saturday, and all student actors did an excellent job. The Rogers Swim Team remains undefeated and will head to the state championships at Brown University Saturday, February 21st. The boys indoor track team became Rhode Island Class C Championships -- Champions over the weekend at the Class Championship Meet at Central. The girls' basketball senior night is this Friday at 7:00 in the Rogers Gym, and the boys' basketball senior night is next Tuesday, the 17th, at 7:00, also in the Rogers Gym, so everybody can come out and support the two basketball teams. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. This is the good part of the meeting. We have two categories of winners here from the robotics derby held on Saturday, January 31st, at New Bedford High School, sponsored by Naval Undersea Warfare Center and the Undersea Science and Engineering Foundation. David, would you want to pass out the stock certificates?
I'll call these books up.
Yes. You want to call them up? And then you can give them there. No. Yours is over.
Can I issue stuffs?
Well, Mr. Dickinson, your teacher's address.
Before you award that, Scott, would you want to talk to us, tell us about this competition and the students involved?
So I've been leading an after-school robotics team since I started teaching here at Rogers, and we've done different things over the years. We've become connected with the Newark program as they take some Rogers kids in the summer for an internship. I've also worked with that group, and they sponsor the Sea Perch Derby, which is what we participated in this year to keep the connection alive between Rogers and Newark. I thought it'd be a good thing to do to participate, and so we put two teams together. They have the regular high school team, and that was the stock group, and I've had some students that have also been involved in the MATS project at URI, and last summer they had some experience working with these sea perch underwater robots. So we also registered them for the open class, a little bit more advanced competition. And we took both teams there and wiped out all of the other visitors, including, which we're really happy to do, the Dartmouth team, who is the hometown heroes as the Nationals this year will be in Dartmouth. And so Newport's going to go to the national event there at UMass Dartmouth in May, and we're sorry to the Dartmouth team that we wiped them out.
All right, so if we could ask Stephanie Martinez as well? And Forrest Vicki?
There is one more for Scott.
Oh, boy, okay. Can't forget these kids who wiped out Dartmouth. And Ashley Brown.
Could you all come back up and stand in front of the camera so everyone can see you, the television camera, and you can wave to TV land? Right up there, Mr. Dickinson, you should go with them, too.
Yeah, Mrs. Bowden has four more.
We got some more.
And then we have Marissa Cassis.
These are from the open division, right?
Open division. We have Lucas Machado. We have Juliana Di Maglio. And Ivy Dickinson. No relation?
Yes, there's a relation there.
Might be. Congratulations.
Now, this is where you stand. Culture certificates in front of you for the camera. There you go.
It is. It is. I see some proud parents out there, too.
Thank you very much. Good luck in there.
Keep it up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dickinson. Mr. Dickens is also very, for those of you that don't know, I'm going to share with the television audience, Mr. Dickinson is also very popular with our Hutter Culture Program over at Rogers, and he helps with the landscaping and keeping our students involved as far as keeping our campus green and good-looking. So thank you for that as well.
Thank you. Now, if you guys want to stay, you are perfectly well. If you have a lot of homework, I would suggest you get to it.
Take care. Bye-bye.
Now we have reports from the superintendent and staff.
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Gaines. The first report in front of you is from our school-based coordinator. It's the monthly report from Carrie Clark. For those of you that haven't recently seen the papers, we are starting our media campaign as far as the Newport area career and technical school. And Carrie Clark, our school-based coordinator, along with Chris Fisher, who is acting director of the program at this time, and our assistant principal, and I, and me, are traveling around in the different Newport County schools to share the programs for next year, to make students aware of the opportunities that are available here on the Career and Tech Campus, and also to just inform the public in general that this is their Career and Tech Center. So all students in the Newport County Schools, that's Little Compton, Tiverton, Portsmouth, Middletown, and Jamestown are eligible to attend our schools at no charge and with free transportation. So we are reaching out to the community. We also have students from Narragansett that are interested, that are outside of our region, that have already applied, and we have some students still from North Kingston. I will also share, I'm going to switch to her report, but just bringing up that we've also met with a parent group. And the parent group is about the World of Work Mentor Program. That is something that's going to be embedded within our students' internships and within our Career and Tech Center, as well as some of our other programs in our academic classrooms. And in these, in this world of work, we have, we're very fortunate in Newport that we have volunteers that are coming forward, business, retired business people, and others that are active in the community that are working with our students as far as teaching them the proper etiquettes, as far as how you go on an interview, resume building, and how to dress, et cetera, soft skills that a lot of employers these days are saying our students need. So the report is in front of you. I think I've highlighted a lot of what's been going on. If there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them for Carrie.
Expend, no. Expenditures and revenue reports. Joan?
All right, may I? Madam Chair? All right, so go ahead. Yes, please. Right now, we have this month's report as far as the operating fund only. Business manager, finance director, Joan Tracy is available for any questions. There will be a follow-up under discussion as far as next steps regarding where we see we are right now in the budget. If you'll notice, in the budget right now, we do have a projected gap, shortfall, going forward. Right now, we're projecting a 1.241,597, 1,241,597 gap going forward. I want to be very clear with the public about this. This does not mean we are out of money at this point in time. This means, based upon the trends we're seeing and how we budgeted for this year, if our trends continue the way they are now, and if through some of our negotiations, we do not realize some of the savings we thought we would realize, there is the possibility of a projected $1.2 million gap by June 30th. And I think I'll pause at that, this point, and allow questions, or if anyone wishes to discuss further at this point.
Any questions?
This has also come up on a discussion, right? Obviously, so.
Facilities?
At this point in time, under facilities, I have been continuing conversations with Middletown. Middletown is considering hiring, they are under interview process right now, and they are thinking in the near, very near future, they'll be hiring a facilities director. That has been on the calendar for a couple of months. It has, it's been a little longer than they anticipated in Middletown, but I do want to remind the committee that Middletown, we can, if we want, to consider sharing services with Middletown for director. They are, at this point in time, open to that. The city is also interested, and they have come forward and would like to further some discussions to see how we could work together possibly in that area. As far as the buildings in general, Pell, Thompson, and Rogers, Rogers is experiencing leak roofs, and we have been addressing those as best as possible. Rogers is also in the bond that the city presented and did win, did gain approval from the city taxpayers in order to move forward. I will, with your permission, move forward and speak with Acting City Manager Joseph Nicholson to see where we are as far as that process, because I do know the Rogers roof is in the bond for this year. There's approximately, if my memory serves me correctly, there's about $500,000 plus for the roofs this year going forward for Rogers. The Thompson, I don't want to, knock on wood, Thompson seems to be moving along well. And Pell, we are still addressing some fan issues up on the roof as far as the recent snow blizzard, and I welcome Mr. Hanos to jump in. He's been very active as far as helping in the facilities area. And we just yesterday had a meeting with the contractor and a consultant that flew in from Atlanta. He actually got in, flew into Boston, and then he came down, and we met at Pell's school yesterday, and Mrs. Gaines as well, the chairwoman. We were there to take a look at what's going on with those fans on the roof. They're used for bringing in fresh air to help circulate within the building, and this is the second time we've had one particular unit have problems, and we need to replace it. So we're having discussions. The consultant is here. We'll be finding out more, I think, in the next couple of days about what the status is there. We were assured, and please correct me if I get this wrong, we were assured that all the repairs will be made at no cost to the Newport School Department on the fan on the roof, and we look forward to hearing what's going on with that as far as the hood design. The other thing, I just want to make everyone aware, remind everyone, we have been without a facilities director since the beginning of December, and I want to publicly thank the plant engineers at each of our building that have stepped up as we've delayed that hiring. We have Mr. Robert Coyne here in the Nactac Building. We have Mr. George Leary of Rogers High School, Mr. David Biello at Thompson Middle School, and Mr. Vinny Butler, Vincent Butler. All these men have been stepping up and moving the teams forward in order to keep the facilities safe, keep the facilities clean, and addressing any emergency situations. So I want to personally thank all of them. And Mr. Hanos, I don't know if you want to add to that, or Mrs. Gaines, both of you are present.
No, I do like the action from Mr. Farrar and Associates, who we've actually asked to come back and complete the project, of getting all of the trades together, getting the stakeholders of the individuals who installed these units, and basically not point fingers, but to work hard to get them repaired at no cost to the district, so I do want to thank him for that as well. It has been a pretty good, amicable relationship. I think everybody's learned a little bit, and at the end of the day, the facility will be brought back up to, those units will be brought to 100% at no cost to the school department.
Good. I don't have anything to add to that.
Okay.
Next report is the enrollment reports.
Okay, and in front, all right. And yes, thank you, Mr. Hanos. Mr. Farrar has been very helpful, and he's been there to guide us through the way, so I appreciate that. The enrollment reports and demographic reports, there's no significant change, if you'll notice, in that right now, as the enrollment has increased a little, but it's nothing extraordinary, and the demographics remain pretty much the same. Our population, 47% white, about 24% black, and 23% Hispanic in the Newport schools.
And the homeless report, good news.
Yes, the homeless report, we have seen a slight decrease in the number of families that are in the homeless situation, so that is good news. And that's all there is for the homeless report.
Okay, now, progress update. I think you have given us. Is there more to add in that?
So the progress update, for those of you that are not aware of what the progress update is, the school department, I'm sorry, the school committee set specific goals for the year from January through December, and the school committee had elected certain, specific topics, and our charge from an administration perspective was to go back and get more specific about setting measurable goals for the topics or the items that the school committee decided to focus on for this year. A lot of it does build on from last year. The first one is graduation rates. That is something we do need to, we have been working on, we have been focusing on, we have been monitoring students with the support of the school committee, the new ALP, we now call it Accelerated Learning Program, and the focus on, just in general, on our seniors. We have seen this year, as, which has been mentioned to you in some of my weekly updates, we've actually had a student graduate within the past month, and we have two others that are on their way and are on, back on track to graduate on time. So for the public and the audience, that is really the focus. We're really, one student at a time, making sure we're monitoring his or her progress, and we make sure we have the right supports in place. And I want to thank the school committee for the Alternative Learning, Accelerated Learning Program, because we helped to accelerate those students to get them back on track. It's been very successful in its pilot year. The graduation rate still needs a lot of work. Right now, as you'll see from the update that you have, I did come out, and the graduation rates, just for the public as well, the graduation, graduation rates are finalized in January of the, of the, after the June graduation. So Rogers' graduation rate did increase, and it did meet the committee's goal of increasing, I think, by three or four percent, which is now meaning, means that the graduation rate is 73%. We still have a long ways to go. So going forward, I am thinking that you'd like to at least do another 4% and raise it hopefully to 77% from a year from now. I don't know if you want to have a discussion or review that, but that's what the administration team was thinking. AP courses for the public, AP courses, the Career and Tech Center, which I mentioned earlier, looking at the Thompson Middle School, scheduling, how we schedule students, we're looking at that, possibly a redesign there. The Accelerated Learning Program, making sure we're watching and monitoring the students one child at a time. Early learning, collaborating with our Head Start Program, continuing to do that, as well as possibly sharing with Middletown this year some pre-K programs. Truancy is something that has been in the news recently. We did receive a Van Buren grant. We're in the middle of hiring the people that we will be able to attain through that grant money to help us focus more and provide more home visits for our families and supports. And let me see, again, then we have STEAM. We're, we have already activated at the elementary level, we have STEAM supports and STEAM programming. We're trying to bring real-world situations as far as technology, engineering, and math into the elementary setting, showing what they, making those connections with students, showing them how those skills they learn are applied to different, either careers or possibly just different ways of doing experiments or looking or understanding the big concepts in math and science. And then we have the budget. The budget, you'll notice, has a lot of, I'll call them, steps under it and next steps that we have to do, and we do need to set up a long-term goal with our budget. I believe one of the things you'll see at the bottom, not only have we been trying to seek alternative revenue sources in order to help with our budget, we're continuing to share, to explore shared services, whether it be with the city or with other communities. And you'll notice, too, that we're looking into creating a three-to-five-year comprehensive budget forecast with the city of Newport. And that's the update. It has more specificity to it, it has measurable goals, and that is something that we are to be held accountable for going forward.
Now, the orange boxes, is that something we'll discuss under item seven?
The orange boxes. The orange boxes are under finance, and what they are is monthly balances being monitored at both district and building levels. The other one is establishing the 2015 budget planning and timeline by March 1st, and the other one is creating that three-to-five-year comprehensive budget forecast. Those are orange, are delayed at this point in time because our finance department and our HR department have been very busy working, bless you, working with negotiation teams and also gathering data and information for those meetings. And so that's just something felt was important to highlight, that there's only so many hours in the day, and our team is being stretched in all directions to make sure we do have correct information and we are able to come to the table with the right information. So it is temporarily delayed, we are aware of that, so we know we have to go back to our timelines, and we have to ramp up some areas.
Well, March 1st is right around the corner.
Correct.
I thought we might want to put that on, bring that forward. The three-to-five-year budget forecast goes with the budget.
Correct.
At the time we present the 2015 budget, right?
The 2016 budget.
2016.
Yes, but I do also, just a recommendation, and I think this is for all of you during the discussion portion of the meeting, is I do think we do need to sit down with the city and have conversations about working together and what kind of plan we want to create together in order to create a budget that is sustainable. And I don't want to really, I don't want to go to history, but I don't think it's a surprise we have a challenge with our budget, especially when the city council did everything it could, gave us as much as it could according to law. And even at that time, we had over $2 million we had to cut within 30 days in order to have a balanced budget. All right? So we need to create something sustainable. That's what I'm trying to say. Thank you.
And I think we have a finance meeting coming up, don't we? Okay. Could I have a motion to accept the reports?
I make a motion to accept the reports as presented.
Second?
It's been moved in second, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda. Is there any action that would prevent us accepting the consent agenda as is? If so, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the consent agenda as written.
Second it?
Mrs. Gaines?
Yes, Mr. [inaudible].
If I may, I have no, I just want to read one of the retirement letters, and could the superintendent announce the names after we approve it?
Okay.
Oh, you can announce names, whoever.
No, she can do that. It's been moved and seconded to accept the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Would you like to address 6.2?
Could I read the letter first?
Yeah.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, thank you. I mean, people retire, constantly, I mean, I think it's always important to, somebody's writing these nice letters to us, you know? I just wanted to read one of them in essence of time. This one says, starts off, is addressed to Mrs. Superintendent. Please let this last serve as a notice of my retirement from the city of Newport Public Schools effective April 8, 2015. Please know that I have had the privilege of serving superintendents in school committees throughout my tenure. I convey my wholehearted appreciation to each and every one of you for providing me with knowledge and appreciation for public education in Newport Public Schools. I do want to take a moment to say thank you to the staff, faculty, the parents, and the community partners in public education for their dedication and hard-earned efforts, providing each and every student with the ability to succeed in the most ever-changing world. Suspectly Wendy Gazer.
Right, so.
That is a resignation we accept with a lot of regret and a lot of gratitude. Wendy's been around for as long as I can remember, and.
1982.
1982. That's a long trek.
Is it 82 or 92?
It says 92, maybe it's 82.
92, 92.
It's probably right. It could be a typo.
I thought she was here before that.
Yeah, probably 52.
No, no.
She'd kill you if you.
She wouldn't give me eyes right now.
I'm sure we all wish Wendy well. She was a long and faithful servant.
Yes, so yes, Wendy Gazer is one, and she will be missed, and she already is missed. The good news I can share is she's very happy, and I think she's in a place where a lot of us hope to be someday. So we do wish her the best, and she's definitely left a mark on the Newport Public Schools, and a lot of people may not be aware, some are, but the amount of work and the amount of dedication in order to serve in that role, it takes a very unique and special person. And I want to personally thank Wendy. I did not have a lo, long time with her, but she will be a person I will never forget. So I want to thank her. The other retirees, we've got Cheryl Abney, school nurse teacher, Thompson Middle School. She has been with the Newport School since 2008, and she has held positions as a positions as a teacher and guidance counselor. I know Ms. Abney is highly respected and well-liked, and the children and the staff, she's going to be, we will miss her dearly. The other one, Jacqueline Killian, Dean's Office, Guidance Office Clerk, Thompson Middle School. Ms. Killian began her employment with the Newport Public Schools in June of nineteen ninety-eight as a clerk in the administration building. And I know Ms. Killian and Ms. Gazer did start around the same time, very close, so it was in the nineties. And she will be missed dearly. Another one is Renato Ramirez, custodian at Thompson Middle School, or as we all know him as Ray. I was able to see Ray today and to thank him for all his years of service and duty for our schools. He will be someone we will miss as well. And finally, another nurse-school teacher, Colleen Reposa, Rogers High School. She has been with the district since nineteen ninety-two, and initially she was a health occupation teacher with NACTAC in the Career and Tech Center. And then she served as a nurse at the elementary level. We will miss her as well, Colleen Reposa. Thank you.
And the leave of absence? Yeah.
Okay. So we will have a, tonight, Raleigh Brennan was granted a leave of absence.
The school calendar for nineteen, I mean, twenty fifteen, sixteen.
You're going to say nineteen fifty, Mrs. Gaines?
Oh, my God.
Okay. So, the calendar tonight is not up for discussion, meaning in the sense we have a calendar to present. The Rhode Island Superintendents Association, about two to three months ago, had before its executive board and committee, asked all school districts to survey their districts to see the interest in keeping a February school vacation. So I believe it was North Smithfield, Mr. O'Brien's district, created the survey, and all of us in the state have been issuing or implementing the survey just to kind of get an idea of the thinking in everyone's community. The part of the reason the North Smithfield and a lot of the northern communities did this was because they were concerned about the amount of snow days they were having and how late their school years were going in June. They, one, one district last year, as a member, matter of fact, I believe it was Cumberland. Cumberland did pilot this last year, and they had a three-day weekend on President's Weekend. Then the next day, I believe, they had a professional development day for teachers, and then the students went to school Wednesday through Friday. That kind of caught on, and other districts up in the northern region decided to do the same. And then as all of us are aware, on this date, February tenth, we've already experienced four snow days. Three of them are still on the books that we have to make up. One, through cooperation with the teachers' union and working together, we have rescheduled parent conferences so that students will be attending school every day this week in lieu of having a day off for parent conferences. In front of you, I briefly, I gave you a synopsis of what I saw as far as when, when I read the results of the survey. And at this point in time, I think this is an opportunity for you to share your thinking after seeing the results, after reading my synopsis of your thoughts on the calendar going forward. After that, I will go back to the drawing board with the administration team and then also meet with the union to have discussions about what we would like to do going forward as far as a 2016 calendar. So it's your time to talk.
All right. Who's first? David?
This report, were the four hundred and fifty-four people responding from the Newport School District?
Yes.
Okay.
Were there any, oh, Becky.
I just wanted to comment. I took the survey as a parent, and I know that, you know, surveys are difficult to write, you know, and to get it right, to be able to write them, but I found it frustrating as some people who took that survey did, that you couldn't really come out and say what you wanted to say. So I think one thing that wasn't looked at was taking the whole two weeks at Christmas. And the reason I say that is that I think the decision's to be based on what's best for kids and for education. And I think that when we get the Monday off or the Tuesday off during Christmas week, those are kind of freebie days as teach, you know, as in the classroom. The kids think of them that way, you know, because it's kind of, oh, you know, we're in a holiday mood, and I don't know how much teaching really gets done on those days. So I think it'd be interesting to survey people to find out if, you know, about getting the, you know, two weeks at Christmas and if that's a possibility. I just think that it would be better educationally if, you know.
Any other comments?
I, I, go ahead, Cindy.
I know, I was going to say, having put together surveys for all the purposes, I'm finding it hard to see real trends in this because some, some of the findings are contradictory. You know, you have some folks saying, you know, we should start earlier, some say start later, pay more attention to teaching rather than the calendar, so maybe it was the, the fault could lie in the instrument itself, but obviously you wanted to get this out for people's input. That's all I can say right now. I mean, I.
Bobby?
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Chairman, Ms. Chairman. Madam Chair, I have real mixed emotions about this. It's weird. Being a teacher, I used to like it and sometimes I didn't. But I've asked different people who had parents, there's no poll, no survey, no nothing. One of them, he doesn't have a lot of money, he said, he really loves that vacation. He said, he takes his kids over to Yago, and he said, we go skiing one day, you know, we don't have the opportunity. A lot of times, this year's been a ton of snow, but there's years we don't have any snow hardly, and they look forward to it. And I think the thing should be, we should be in school more, and if we're going to get them out those days in February and take them off to June, you're going to be off longer and longer. Instead of two months off, you're going to be off three months, you know, so the gap gets longer and longer, I think, or larger and larger with the, with the kids. So I would tend to think that personally right now, the keeping it as is personally. This is my thoughts. I mean, I can go, somebody tomorrow says, let's get rid of this and let's do three days and do it, I'm fine with it. I'm not obsessed with it, but I thought, you know, it's, the more you're out during, one thing I really think is good in Newport, and I really have to say this loud and clear, being in the service industry and working in the service industry for forty years now, more, the last week in August, you get killed. It's, it's, the last ten, fifteen years, it's just dropped off tremendously because everybody's starting school except around here. But we are a service industry, we're out of town, and I think we should stick with going after Labor Day to school because it's, it's just a message we're sending to the businesses that at least we're here to try to keep the kids working right through up to Labor Day.
Well, speaking from experience too, when we would have, I think, a couple of years, school started right before Labor Day, and we had those, they used to call them non-members because they wouldn't show up until after Labor Day because they were still on vacation or traveling somewhere. I think one of the concerns is that sometimes people take off the week before and/or after a vacation, so the kiddies are not around for better part of a month. Therein lies the difficulty, regardless of where the vacations are.
I forgot. One other comment I wanted to make was that I was always told that because the February vacation was standard, it was the President's Day, that we always took, tried to make a certain amount of time before the, the spring vacation. If we do lose that February vacation, it's, maybe it's a possibility to always connect, as they do on the West Coast, always connect that spring vacation with the Easter holiday. And I know that, you know, that might survey some people on that, but you might also, you could get away with one day less because we typically have Good Friday off of school. So it's just a thought, if they do, you know, if they move it to that, because it means just families could go places, that's all.
Anybody else?
Do you want me for the television audience to share some of the information?
Oh, I had a comment about the calendar. I too am concerned about starting school before Labor Day. I, I think those days, unless you're using those days for professional development, I think they are lost days because kids simply are not going to show up, families are not ready. As Bobby mentioned, we are still a tourist destination, and things just don't start slowing down here until after Labor Day. I think we could make some of those days up by shortening the February vacation and by connecting, as Becky mentioned, the April vacation to Good Friday. That would extend three more days for families to get away, to do things together as a family. I think we, we need to just start over and, and not assume that we need to do things the way we've always done them. I remember last November, I was in one of the, one of the schools somewhere, and a parent mentioned to me that her friends had left the weekend before to start their Thanksgiving vacation. So the Monday and Tuesday is questionable about as, as far as attendance. I think we need to look at our attendance rolls on those days preceding vacations and see what we can glean from those days that are close to Thanksgiving, close to Christmas Eve. People are going to stay around for two days, Monday and Tuesday, if school is closing on Wednesday. They're going to leave on Friday for their travel. So I, I think we can learn as much from our own data as we can from those surveys. So I would say, let's take a look at what has happened in the district, compare it with our neighbors and see what they have to say. Maybe it's time to just take a fresh look at the calendar and not go business as usual.
I just think Labor Day is very late this year, the seventh.
Right.
Yeah, it is late.
One of the difference I'm just going to, from, is the Labor Day. That is the difference with us on the island, which I know the community and I agree, after Labor Day, but that's one of the big differences right away. I know Portsmouth is starting August and others are.
August, we'd be.
I guess there's now a tourist-based economy.
Right, I know, I know, I agree.
So one of the other, Mrs. Gaines, if I could, oh, excuse me, I'm going to speak. Madam Chair, the one thing, being Christian, you're more Christian, so is Sandra, that change, and I don't mean that derogatory word to me, but being, you know, that Easter changes, you know, it is based on the full moon. We all know that, right? So sometimes it's in March, you know, and sometimes it's in April, and it's not, it's not set month all the time. It's forty days after the full moon in February, you know. So it's not, it's not the Greek or the challenges based on another calendar.
What's that got to do with being a Christian?
Well, I mean, it just changed, you're changing the, it changes the, you know, it's not set like the, like the Greek or.
Sometimes you have only, you know. Easter week, so.
Okay, okay.
Yeah. Changes, it's different, you're right, David.
We're going to have Ash Wednesday off, that's what you said.
Yeah, I kind of said that wrong, I'm sorry about that.
That's okay.
Oh, that's all right.
Which is good, is you.
Okay, moving on, seven point two.
All right, seven point two. All right, so now we're back on the budget and the projected shortfall and next steps. All right. In your packet, you have tonight the projected, again, budget gap for 2015. It's based upon what we're seeing in the trends and in the budget. The three largest drivers for this gap are retiree benefits, transportation, and pension contributions. These three items alone equal $1,176,752. So those three, retiree benefits, transportation, and pension total that amount. Other items such as out-of-district tuition costs and the trends we are seeing for substitute teacher costs due to long-term illnesses, pregnancies, and an unusual increase in bereavement are contributing factors to the projection, projection as well. So for the, so the retiree benefits right now, we're running about $862,683 if the projections continue as we see them. Transportation, this includes ride out-of-district placements in our extra buses we've had to put on and monitors comes to $256,426. And then the pension costs, because of some changes we've had in strategy or related to some other costs, comes to $57,643. And that brings the total to $1,176,000 with, so you can see right there, those three items. Now, just for the public and for those that were not on the committee, a little background for the context, the local appropriations and municipality can grant to a school district falls within certain parameters. And last year, the city council did help us tremendously and came through, and they approved as much as they could for the budget we submitted, and that amount was $918,366. After that meeting, by law, the school department and the school committee are required by law, by, within thirty days, to go back and balance the budget. So after we were granted, awarded that amount from the city, we had to go back and we had to make aggressive cuts to address over the $2 million gap. A majority of these gap, these cuts were to be realized through negotiations and changes to the present operating practices regarding retiree benefits as well as seeking additional revenue sources such as grants, increasing student enrollment at NACTAC because we do get revenues when those enrollments increase, and other partnership opportunities such as sharing services with other districts to keep costs down. The district has implemented a budget freeze since November, and we have delayed, delayed hiring administrative and leadership positions in the areas of facilities, technology, some student services, and support positions for management without sacrificing students, services, or programs to our students. Savings have been met. Since June, the school department and the school committee have been in negotiations with the two unions and the retirees. As time passes each month, there is less time to realizes, realize the projected savings to help balance the budget. So, some of the recommendations, by law, we have to notify the Auditor General's office, we have to make official notification to the city and others of the possibility of this projected gap. I will, with the committee's approval and okay, I'll move forward and draft a letter for the Auditor General to send out within the five business days as required by law. We are then also required, when we send this letter, and it does not have to be precise, but we should and we are required to share what our thinking is and what our possible strategies are for moving forward. I have also included in, for discussion purposes for you tonight, a proposal to address the projected budget gap. I've also shared with you something, and I want to, I want to thank Laura Citron, Jim Nolan, and Acting Interim Joseph Nicholson for their help in meeting and sitting with our business manager, Joan Tracy, and me, in order to go over some of these numbers I'm sharing with you tonight. What you have before you in item one is some information regarding the amount of money our retirees have been putting towards the Extended Benefit Trust. The Extended Benefit Trust is a fund in which our retirees and some of our present employees who are interested in, in receiving lifetime benefits make contributions. When the trust was created, there was a requirement for this, and this was before me, so I will look to Mr. Leary because I believe you're still the chair of this trust. look to Mr. Leary, because I believe you're still the chair of this trust.
Oh, not chairman, treasurer, yes.
Yeah, the treasurer of the trust. There was a requirement that no one was allowed to access this trust at any time. And I have to say, there was a lot of forethought for the retirees when these things were put together about thinking about the future and how you could possibly cover these costs. So if you look at item one that I've shared with you tonight, you'll see that the fair market value of the OPEB trust and of the Extended Benefit Trust, of the Extended Benefit Trust, which is what impacts the contributions retirees have been giving and as far as, and are active people, and I'm looking to my finance business person to make sure I'm reporting this correctly. You'll see right now, an unrealized gain, that's the difference between the fair market value, and that's why you see the initials F-M-V for fair market value, and the investments and the costs of these investments, there's approximately $1.2 million, or to be precise, $1,244,994,000 right now there from the allocated Extended Benefit Trust. I know in the past, before I arrived, there have been discussions between the council and the committee about who has access to these funds and whose funds these are. I'm just going to say, I think we agree, we disagree at times upon, when you speak to people, who has access, but I do believe that the school department and the school committee does have the right to access these funds. This is not the answer to our situation. This is a strategy, a step in the process of creating a sustainable system going forward and keeping those that are already retired, and I do not mean to speak out of turn, but keeping those already retired whole and with comparable plans so that they can go on to live their lives as they were hoping to, knowing that they had some kind of coverage going forward. Again, I want to be very clear, I'm sharing my opinion here, my opinion, and I do not speak for anyone. So because this is something that impacts all of us and in our entire community, and to those who served our schools and served our schools well, and to those that are presently serving our schools well, I think my recommendation is to sit down with the city council and have a frank discussion about this and about how we move forward to create a three- to five-year budget plan that is sustainable for the school department to continue with rigorous programming, the services we need to provide for our students, and to increase such things as our graduation rates, our enrollment, and be the kind of school system we know the Newport school system can and should be, and is working towards that. We're a great school system, and we have so much more potential as well, but we need to have those discussions. So that is item one. Now, if you go back, you'll notice on my memo, I did share with you that, and I highlighted the, well, I highlighted in my notes, the $1,244,994,000 that I think we should have a discussion about. And I will share, and I did tell Acting Interim City Manager Joe Nicholson and Laura Citron, we did have the conversation, we would be sharing that we did have this, and we do believe we can move this forward in some kind of a discussion. But the other recommendations I have are to continue seeking alternative revenue sources through grants, partnership, and other opportunities such as shared services or other means. Newport is on the radar screen from outside funders. I think you, we're already aware, we received the Van Buren Grant with our Newport Partners for Families. We also received a City Champs Grant, which Mayor Napolitano just returned with our food directors, Cindy King, and as in a joint effort, we're trying to make more national connections as far as different types of fundings and possibilities. We also should continue the budget freeze and continue to delay further hiring of personnel whenever possible. I will share with you that IT area right now does raise a flag, especially since we're starting the new park assessments, and we do need to make sure we have someone, not only for our teaching, most importantly, for our teaching and learning in the classroom, but running a day-to-day operations. I do need to make sure I have a turn-to person for the network and other operating systems. So I think this is now the time for all of you to talk, and Joan and I are here to listen or.
Can I get something clarified just before we start, so I understand?
Yes.
Okay, so the, first of all, was this on, is this public information now, this, what we're discussing?
Yes, that's a, that's a public document.
Did it get put on Board Docs for, is it on board, the public part of Board Docs?
Yes.
It is. Okay, good, all right. So the $1,244,000, when it says an unrealized gain, is that another word for interest we've gained on it? Is that another way to say interest? Is that another way to just say interest?
I don't think it's bad.
No, no, definitely not, Becky.
Okay, can you, can you come up, explain what ungained, I just want to understand it.
Both of them can.
Well, I just got to understand it before. And then where would the $1 million we put into this when we had, when we had, you know, budget, where would that be? Is it just inside?
That's the line above. That's the OPEB.
Yeah, 1.5, 1.6 million almost now, that is, but 1.2 we put in.
So I'm looking, where should I be looking for that, on the detailed one?
On that item one.
Yes.
You see where the gain is over in the, the $615,000 gain is the, is the difference between the cost of that investment. What that fair market value means, these are the assets as of June 30, 2014. If they had been sold on that day, the difference between the cost of the investment plus all the realized gains to date and what we would have made if we had sold them on, at that moment in time, is the unrealized gain.
Right, so forget that.
Right now, the market has even gone up further than that, but I can't tell you exactly how much.
The FMA is, if you sell it outright right now, what's in the account is $4.8 million. That's what's in the account. Think that. So we can't go and say we're going to sell this whole thing.
So that includes, that includes the interest.
That includes the interest.
That includes, so that's the, okay, the number.
We had, we put 1.2 million into it, and we're now at 1.6. We made $400,000 on what we put into it over the past four or five years.
Okay.
And it's been very good interest, a very good investment by the trust and investment fund, you know?
Okay.
If I may, Matt, Chief, I can continue a little bit.
Yes.
I am dead set against doing this, however, this is a big however, if we come down to doing that, we negotiate with the city, then I would think that we have to, any money we take out of this, we would have to pay back with interest, period. Because to do this is short-term thinking and not coincide with long-term thinking, taking money. That fund is only 30% funded right now, and the city wants to give them to 70% funded before you start doing anything with them. So to take money out of the thing that's already underfunded, you're going to have problems down the road to retirees and everybody else, and it's not right. It happened before at the firemen in Newport, they took the money out of the city, they just paid something with it, paved some roads and things with it, and now they're having a lot of trouble because they're still underfunded and they're trying to get there. So the elephant in the room here is, you know, it's never been properly funded, period. And to take money out of something that's not properly funded is a huge mistake, and you're going to make a bad situation worse. So I would never support this, but if we're forced to do something like this, I would support it only if we take and put the money back in that we take out, as less as possible. And I don't like this idea at all, but if we're stuck, and I hate to say it, but it's a school committee's problem here, you know? I sat here, and I know if Dave Collins was here tonight, he'd be swearing up and down because he went through all the tapes. I sat here and Charlie Schumaker and people shut me down in October when I was complaining, saying, we're five months into this thing now, which, what we're talking about for the public, I guess, is of this $1.1 million budget, $860,000 from the retirees account, that lineup. We reduced that lineup, and every month, that's $70,000 a month, you divide by 12. Every month went by, 70, you know, 140. And we got to the fifth month, I'm saying, we're almost $400,000 in the hole of this budget, and we're not addressing it. And it's something we should address back in October, November, and not now. So now we're stuck with $1.2 million. And I would never, I didn't support that the first time around, and to support that now on making assumptions on a budget is not a good idea. I'm sorry to ramp on about this, but I just could not support taking that money out.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear, I didn't want to, I didn't want to access, access all of it. I was just making the committee aware of it, but I was saying, I did say yes to use some of it. That's why I said that we need to have a strategic type of plan.
Oh, absolutely.
How to address it.
Yeah, and I'm not, I just think it's a bad precedent to start, very bad, taking money out of a thing that's underfunded right now, you know?
I have a question. If we were to promise to pay this back, how would we pay it back?
You'd have to pay, like the city gives an allocation of $200,000, and if you go, if we took out $300,000, we're going to put $50,000 in for four years, $100,000 in for three years, whatever it would be, you'd have, I would never vote any other way for it. I would not vote.
I understand that, but I was just wondering, we're at a loss now.
Well, I hate to say this.
How do we say, okay, we'll pay you back, when we aren't guaranteed that we're going to have any money to pay it back?
You've got to figure out something, because I can't be on board with it any other way, personally, you know?
Okay, so I was betrothed to this, if you don't know, chosen, someone to marry you, you don't even know it, so when I got sworn in, we owned this budget collectively. I didn't, wasn't able to vote on it, I don't really know what was behind it, but the more that I can see is, it is an issue that this, this school, seated committee will deal with. We have to deal with it. We have to think outside the box. I really don't like the premise as to why we're 862 in the hole, because it was based upon an assumption that there would be a successful agreement with our retirees. And I don't want to get too into that because I believe there's still some conversation for the district, and the retirees are trying to work something out. Both parties are fully aware of the situation we're in, and we know that there were promises that were made, and I hope that we are continuing to work through this. But, that being said, that was based upon an assumption that an accord would have been struck, which it hasn't yet. So for every month that ticks by, that was a vote taken last year on that bird that was not in your hand. So I don't necessarily want to keep, I don't like to use the fact that the reason that is, it's basically a line item with a name next to it, but it really wasn't an issue that was brought upon us by a group of retirees. This was something that was done in a budgeting process. How do we pay that money back? If we were to use it to help get us out, that is to make a budget, and maybe you spread it out over the next five years, that will actually work with the bird in the hand versus the two in the bush, because that bird in the hand is worth far more to me than it is for an assumption. And I believe we can do that by thinking outside of the box. We're in the middle of negotiations with the unions, we're having a conversation with our retirees, which is different from negotiations. But I do believe that we can come up with a way, Mrs. Gaines, if we stretched it out over five years with an interest-bearing repayment plan, but I would not vote on this if this did not include that component, because we are stealing from Peter to pay Paul, it is a very bad, I don't know of a fiscal advisor that I've spoken to that doesn't say this is not a good idea at all to take these funds out of this at such a low funded rate. I don't know if the fund is actually at 30%, Joan, I don't know if that's, I mean, Bobby, you said it, you're the treasurer of that group, so the governor is looking for all these things to be funded to 60% to 80% or something, to have them not at risk, and to take potentially, I don't know if that's, does that represent 25%? I mean, I know you didn't say a certain number or what have you, we haven't come up with that component, but I agree with Bobby that I would, I would be very hesitant to take this funds whatsoever unless we had it built in that we would pay it back if it takes five years or three years, that we need to do that. We're basically taking a loan on ourselves is the way I view it. That would be it.
It's dangerous. It's a dangerous thing.
A couple comments, I agree with, I won't, you know, reiterate it, but I agree with Bobby and Dave on this issue too. But, I mean, one thought is, you know, the city just loaned the state, you know, a lot of money for the roads, I mean, maybe we get the, maybe we get a loan from the city, it's a conversation that could be had. And the second thing is, I just want to make everybody aware, the really scary thing to me too is that next year, we're going to have over a million dollar structural deficit, and that is very scary when it comes to programming for kids, and I don't, you know, it's going to be a very difficult budget season.
That's, that's why I asked the question, how do we pay it back? We have to find a way, as Dave said. It's a situation we're facing, and we have to deal with it. We have to find a way. I don't have the answer, but it's out there somewhere. Ken? Are you done?
I'm done.
Do you have anything else?
I just, I just want a clear direction.
Yeah, that's good, yeah, go ahead, thank you, thank you.
Okay, so I do want to say something. I knew when I came to Newport, I actually have made this comment to some of you, that people did say to me right away, you know you're going to have a budget problem there. There have been delayed situations going on from year to year, and budget has been very challenging, and I know before I arrived, there were some, before Joan Tracy started, there were some changes in the finance department that made it very challenging for previous administrations.
Over and over.
I think the thing about now is transparency needs to be there for everyone, and one of the things, and one of my jobs, whether I like it or not, is to take a look at a budget and look at what the drivers are, or I'll call them outliers in some cases, as far as how Newport compares to other communities when we're paying for different services and different programs. In November, we were presented with such a program with the UCOA, that was the purpose of that UCOA chart. And I know Mr. Leary with the Finance Subcommittee, it's been rescheduled, we're going to have a training for everyone, so everyone can take a better look at how to use that UCOA tool and be able to, for ourselves, dig deeper into the budget and take a look at what are some of the things we're doing comparatively the same as other districts, and what are we possibly doing as others. How we handle this, I think, is very important, especially for going forward and for the future, and I think it needs to be addressed fully, not partially. And that's what I see my role here, is to help it be addressed fully so that going forward, we can have budgets that are able to sustain and grow programs. I just needed to say that, so thank you.
I just have a final statement, so we can move forward. We do, again, I say I am confident we will come up with a way to do this, and I don't want to look over my shoulder too much, but I will, just to ensure that things of this nature don't happen again, but I know coming into this position, I've read, we're working together now with the council, we have a liaison group with the city council, more transparency opening up, but prior to that, 10 years of level funding from the city doesn't help either with everything else going up. I mean, we've, this school committee was burdened with year after year, 10 years in a row, of forced to make cuts and become level-funded by a city council. That's an extremely difficult thing to do with the cost of living, heating, fuel, supplies, everything going up, and that, I believe that the school committee did a good job in trimming the amount of facilities, consolidating the schools, doing everything that I thought that I thought could be done. So I will state that it's awfully hard to keep that budget the same when you get no increase in your budget for 10 years in a row, so.
Mrs. Gaines?
Yes.
I wanted to say, much like Mr. Hanos inherited all this, I think our superintendent inherited a huge challenge, huge challenge coming into this, and she's taken it, and the most important thing is that so much has gone back in.
important thing is that so much has gone back into the programming. We are in such a better place as a school district, our children are in such a better place, that, that to me is the most, you know, really the very most important thing. And, you know, when you for years use one-time monies, we used our era money, that was over a million dollars over two years, and we use that to, you know, to balance our budget. And when you do that, you cause a problem that you cannot recover from, you know? It just, when, when the city has a limit, how much money they give us, you, you know, it's, it's almost an impossible situation. So we're just going to continue to work as a group here to get this fixed.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Thank you. IT.
The IT Director update. I did send, and you have seen, a proposal to Portsmouth to see if they were interested in shared services on a trial basis through the end of June. They have a meeting this evening, and the superintendent will be sharing that information, and I believe having a discussion tonight with their, their committee. I do know that, I did sit next to one of the Portsmouth Town Council people. I do know the Town Council would like to share the IT with the Town Council, so I believe they're having that discussion this evening.
Yeah, I saw one of their meetings on TV, and they were discussing that.
Mm-hmm. 7.4, and I believe 7.5, I've already discussed in earlier reports as far as the facilities update. We did, Mr. Hanos and I did fill you in on the roof fans and the snow, the leaks at Rogers are being addressed, and the Facilities Director update I did share earlier in this evening. I don't really have more to say on that unless someone would like to discuss that further.
Briefly, I just, Colleen, I, I just, I'm, I'm concerned, and I was wondering if you could help me out with the snow removal for Sullivan's, Sullivan, Pell School. How far have we expanded out? I know it was a significant snowfall, but I don't know if it's our staff that's clearing the sidewalks both sides, all the way down to Hillside Avenue, so you're going across, I'm afraid we might be exposing ourselves if someone slips and falls in front of their personal dwelling that states that we cleaned it. Why didn't we salt it and sand it? I know we're trying to get the children in, but is that something we can work with the city on helping us with the removal of the snow, because our staffing is short, just like the rest of the divisions? It's, it's a lot of work on these, these guys are doing a great job, but once we start, is it going to be expected?
Well, all right, because of the snowfall and the unusual amounts of snowfall, we have, and as part of being a good neighbor with the people out next to our school at Pell, we have been shoveling on both sides. We have a snow blower, and we've been going all the way down just because of the foot traffic with the students. We did, I actually went around to some of them and just, you know, shared and inquired, and they were very grateful, and they were like, yes, thank you very much for doing this. We did, when I first arrived, there were discussions about this, and the city did say it's very difficult for them to get out, but they have been helping us from Admiral Calphus to Dexter. They've been helping us with, helping with the clearing there. And then on the other side of Admiral Calphus, about halfway down to Bedlow. I know the neighbors have, such as Mr. Watts, he comes out, and he's, no, he's great, he's, he does a, a large portion of his property to make sure the students are fine. Not having it shoveled does cause problems. And I guess, in my role, I wanted the sidewalks cleared as much as possible, so I did ask our staff to go down to Hillside. Mr., Joe Nicholson was great as far as helping out on the city on the other side, and then Mr. Reed, Jim Reed, at the Housing Authority, has been clearing all the way from Beacon to Dexter on one side, and then on the other side, all the way over to Newport Heights. I can check into that. I hear you when you're talking about the exposure, you know, as they say, no do, no good deed goes unpunished, and you hope that nothing would come of that, that one of the neighbors would get upset with us if they fell because we cleared their sidewalk. I'll look into that more, though.
And I do say the staff has done a fantastic job.
They've done a great job. They've done a fantastic job.
It's been a lot of snow.
All three locations.
Someone, I hate to say this after Bobby's comment, but someone stopped me at church Sunday and commented on one of our custodians at Thompson. Is there a Nick?
Yeah, Nick Cooper.
Yeah, Nick Cooper.
And how he was shoveling the sidewalk on his own time for a neighbor.
Yeah.
And she, she was just effusive in her praise for him that he would do that. So kudos to Nick for being a good neighbor.
Yep.
Oh, we did facilities?
No, sub, yes, we did.
Okay. Subcommittee update. We have people to add to our Subcommittee appointments. Facilities, Matthew Gray, Gary Mitchell, Michael, Bill O'Handley, Tom Phalen, Bridget Ryan, and Chuck Taylor.
Ma'am Chair, if I could, by your own facilities, good segue for me. I think, I'm going to stay on that committee, but I think I'd recommend David Hanos be the chairman of that committee. It's like a better fit, because he's been the one that's been doing it, we haven't met, you know? It's, it's a much better fit. He's more into construction stuff, so I'll stay on it. I'd like to recommend him be the chairman of that committee.
I would agree with that. I thought he was.
You put those together.
I know. There were some mistakes here, but that's okay.
Yep.
David, would you accept that?
I would accept. Thank you, Bobby.
Thank you. There's another one, I'll do it next month, but Finance Advisory Audit. Ron Becker has agreed to be on, but as in a consultant role rather than a member of the committee that will meet monthly. Luisa Boatright, Ken Nomiana, Nomi Yama, Tom Phalen, and Brian Russell. The Career Technical Coordination Committee has added Mark Chesterton, Mike Cullen, Meg Edwards, Tom Freeman, Valerie Kalwak, William Kim, Kimes, I never say it right.
He's right out there.
Kimes, I know, that's why I looked at him. Colleen Murray, good, good, Maria Sullivan, Ed Pichet, Joanne Ritchie, John Tyler, and missing from this list is Mary Beth Pike. Any objections to those? Policy, O. William Hilton, Paul Sicilian. Now, those are the only one, oh, and Pre-K has added Elizabeth Phelps. Do you know anything about that?
About what?
Elizabeth.
She attended our last meeting in Hope of Fair, and she lives on Prairie Avenue. She's a retired Pre-K administrator.
Okay.
She has experience in the field.
Okay. Now, we're still looking for members for wellness. We need a lot of help here because that's a very important committee. And if you have any interest at all in the health and well-being of our youngsters, please call Marson and volunteer for the Health and Wellness Committee. Could I have a motion to add those people to those Subcommittee's?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Objections? It's unanimous. Okay. Still remaining are the Strategic Planning and Public Relations.
No, Public Relations, Mrs. Gaines, we have 12 applicants.
What? I know.
Oh, okay.
But we're, we need to talk about that.
Right. But we do have several applicants.
Okay. We'll name them next month. Okay. Suggested meeting dates. We have meetings galore. Starting tomorrow morning at 8:15, Council 94 Negotiations Subcommittee. Pre-K Subcommittee meeting at 8:30 tomorrow. 5 o'clock Policy Subcommittee. 5 o'clock Thursday Finance Advisory Audit Subcommittee. Tuesday, February 24th, City Council Liaison Subcommittee at the Public Library. Tuesday, 24th Newport School Committee at 5:30. Oh, that's, yes. And Tuesday at 6:00 PM, Facilities Subcommittee.
That's changing, Ma'am Chair. That date's going to be March 3rd because of the other meeting.
Okay.
An overlapping time.
Any other corrections?
I think Marson already sent that out, actually.
Yeah. Are there any other corrections from any committee chairs?
There is a 5:30, 30th, February 26 Finance Advisory Audit Subcommittee, which is the UCOA workshop with Cindy Brown, which we suspended from last night.
Okay.
So let me ask you a question, Ma'am. Oh, absolutely. Absolutely, yeah, I saw that. Ma'am Chair, so if more, do we have to advertise if more than three members show up for one of these things? For example, let's say the UCOA, there might be other school committee members interested in the UCOA.
We have to advertise in advance.
In advance?
We have to advertise, we post.
We post, thanks.
We don't have to advertise.
All right, thank you, Marson. So we have to post that there's potential of more than three school committee members showing up at the UCOA? So I think other people are interested in showing up.
We post all Subcommittee meetings.
Thank you.
Yeah. And all school committee members are encouraged to attend that UCOA workshop. Well, is there any other business we need here to conduct?
Yes.
We have a minute and a half.
We are, we are going back into executive session that was, we are on recess from, so we don't need to read our law. So I would ask for an adjourn, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
To executive session.
Return to executive session.
Yes, to return to executive session.
So moved.
It's moved, seconded?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
There's a hard copy of Program of Studies, you also have it online, but if anyone wants a hard copy...